Good evening. Hello, everyone, and welcome to our North Babylon Board of Education meeting. Could we please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone, to our public meeting, 8:00, North Babylon High School. We already had started an executive session, so roll call, please.
Mr. Patty.
Here.
Mr. Caraleo.
Here.
Mrs. Rivers.
Here.
Mrs. Rowland.
Here.
Mr. Saez.
Here.
Mrs. Salamah Baraleh.
Here.
And Mr. Myers.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending. Correspondence to the board on the agenda. The Board of Education received the following correspondence to the district clerk from May 13th to June 9th, 2022. Again, this is a new item on the agenda, just to be able to state who sent us some correspondence. If you don't see your name on there and you sent something, please reach out to the district clerk to ensure that your email was received. I need a motion for approval of minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting on May 17th, as well as the minutes from planning session on June 7th, 2022. Motion Heather Rowland, second. Second Keisha Rivers, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. This is the point where we go to superintendent's reports, and we're going to be passing it on to Mr. Eschbach in awards and recognitions, excuse me, student recognition, as well as recognition to Officer Osias. Good evening, everybody. So for tonight, I'm going to start with a couple of recognitions. We are going to be doing awards and recognitions of tenure right after the Personnel Action Report, but to start tonight, I would like to invite up one of our students, Michael Fuentes, who would like to recognize an administrator, so could you please come up?
The mic is all yours. Ask up the educator also? Do I ask up the educator?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Mrs. Lugavina, you want to come up also?
Okay, so my name is Michael Fuentes, and I'm a 2022 recipient of the Coca-Cola Scholarship, and Mrs. Lugavina here was a really big part of that. She was one of the people encouraging me to apply for a lot of scholarships, including the Questbridge Scholarship, which I got a full ride to the University of Pennsylvania. She was one of the people. All right. Before I go into really talking about why I'm recognizing her today, I'm going to read a little something about the Coca-Cola Scholarship Foundation. So in 1986, to celebrate Coca-Cola's 100th anniversary, the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation, supported by Coca-Cola bottlers around the U.S. and the Coca-Cola Company, was established. The mission of the foundation is to enhance educational opportunities through scholarship awards for young people who demonstrate academic excellence and leadership in their schools and community. Education is a primary philanthropic objective of the Coca-Cola system. The purpose of this Educative Distinction Award is simple, to celebrate an educator elected by a Coca-Cola scholar who, in their opinion, has greatly impacted their vision of education. The nominee may be any educator, a superintendent, principal, teacher, coach, band instructor, or counselor. So, Mrs. Lugavina. Thank you so much for being part of my academic experience this senior year. It's been very tough trying to figure out what my next path would be going into any college, or figuring out how it would pay to go to college, and I know that you were one of the people looking over my applications for Coca-Cola, the first phase, the second phase, the final phase, the interview phase. You were there for every step of the way, and you were there to give me mock interviews, anything, any way that you could help me, you were there by my side, so I'm really grateful for you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Here's your phone. Congratulations, Ms. Lugavina. I'd like to invite up a very special guest that we're going to honor tonight at this point, and I would like to invite up Officer Osias, please, to the front. Mr. McSweeney, can you please come down as well? Thank you very much. So I'd like to take an opportunity to say a few words about Officer Osias. She has been a liaison, mentor, and friend to the North Babylon School District for far longer than just my seven years here in the district. She has diligently served the town of Babylon School Districts as a devoted school resource officer and touched the lives of thousands of students over the course of the years. She willingly participated in our daily instruction by visiting classrooms, doing presentations, and joining school activities such as our Challenge Day events. Officer Osias could easily be counted on day or night to provide assistance in a matter of minutes. She was always willing to take a call or respond to a text from me, no matter the time of day or the day of the week. For those of you who had the honor of working with her, know that she will have tough shoes to fill, and she will be fondly remembered by the students, faculty, staff, and the North Babylon School community. I know that our school resource officer is, here she is, right here, our new school resource officer is visiting tonight with us, so I'd like to welcome her as well. Jeannie, you have been an amazing support system for our school district, a friend when one was needed, and always put our students first, and I'm here to celebrate your retirement, and on Independence Day is your official day of retirement, so congratulations and thank you for everything that you've done in the district. Mr. McSweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Eschbach. So I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Rich Schaefer, who regretfully could not be here, but as a first responder and as an elected official who is also a first responder, I always like to remind my colleagues, what would this world look like without our first responders? What would this world look like without our police officers? So at this time, I'd like to give a big hand to Officer Osias. Because it's scary to sit here and think about where we would be in today's day and age without our police officers. So I met Jeannie about five years ago, and I just watched how she interacted, not just with North Babylon, but with every school district in the town of Babylon, and I saw how she poured her heart and soul into our students in educating them with the likes of law enforcement, what police officers do, why they are so vital to our community, and the respect that these kids gave her, even through some difficult times, was amazing. And for someone to touch the souls and touch the hearts of these kids like that takes a very special person, and it stinks that we're losing you, but I'm sure that you're going to go on to better things. I know that you have a small grandchild at home, and congratulations on being able to now finally enjoy and spend a lot of time with that. I'm sure you'll be a babysitter a lot. The supervisor did ask me to just read this last sign here, where he says, "I, Richard Schaefer, Supervisor of the Town of Babylon, do hereby recognize Police Officer Jeannie Osias for providing 20 years of excellent service in law enforcement to the Town of Babylon and surrounding communities with our best wishes and for many years of happiness in the future." And he would like to present this proclamation on his behalf and on the entire Town of Board's behalf to say that we appreciate you and we wish you luck in the future.
Let's give one more round of applause to those wonderful recipients. So this is Section 8 with public participation. This section gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or make a brief statement on agenda items, and agenda items only. The time available, we limited to five minutes. We have to come up to the podium just so everyone could hear, so if anyone has any questions. Awesome, we'll move on. Policy, recommend the Board approves policies for first or second reading. We don't have any at this time. Personnel actions, resignations, terminations, and leaves of absence. The Superintendent of School recommends the Board approves resignations, termination, leaves of absences, and/or positions, abolitions in accordance with applicable provisions of education law and civil service law as in Schedule 1 and 1A. So I need a motion. Motion Bob, second. Second Dan, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So I need a motion to remove Personnel Action Report addendum, subject to further discussion by the Board of Education. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion Heather, second. Second Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I need a motion to, the appointments and tenure and salary changes as amended. Superintendent of Schools recommends the Board of Education approve the employment appointments, tenure appointments, and salary changes in accordance with applicable provisions of education law and civil service law as cited in Schedule 2 and Schedule 2A. I need a motion.
Matt, before we do that, I'm going to abstain from the vote tonight. My husband is on the agenda for football coach, and I think it's a conflict of interest for me to vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rowland. So I need a motion. Motion Mr. Caraleo, second. Second Mrs. Caraleo, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Just want to give a round of applause right now for all y'all in the audience. Yeah. And now we're going to move to just a little ceremony to recognize those who have just been tenured and those who have also been retired and any other awards that we might have, so we're coming down right now. Okay, I'm back. So is Lisa Harsh here? Can you please come down? We're here tonight acknowledging Lisa completing 25 years of service in the North Babylon School District. Lisa is a graduate of North Babylon High School and married her high school sweetheart. During her career at North Babylon, she has been a paraprofessional at MGV for 15 years, Parliament for five years, and the high school for the past five years. Mrs. Harsh has been a union officer for the paraprofessional unit, and she has served some of the most needy children in our schools, as well as students in our CDP program. Lisa is known for her patience, dedication, and commitment to student achievement. She truly cares for the well-being of our students and will always lend a helping hand. It is safe to say that without the support of our paraeducators like Lisa, we would not be able to celebrate academic achievement and accomplishments the way we do. Thank you for your dedication to the students of North Babylon. Congratulations. Congratulations. So now we have some retirement recognitions. Is Debbie Simmons here? Come on down, please. Mrs. Simmons is retiring after completing 23 years of service to the North Babylon School District. During her years in the district, she has served in many roles, from an ARL reading aide, cafeteria aide, door monitor, one-to-one paraprofessional, classroom paraprofessional, and building paraprofessional. Had a lot of roles since you've been here. In each of her roles, she has given full attention and effort to tasks. Mrs. Simmons is extremely dedicated and loyal to the success of our students. She has a great imagination and is able to channel that vision into workable solutions. She is also dependable, flexible, and immensely creative. The students and staff have benefited from her creative bulletin boards throughout the building. When you walk through the hallways at Belmont Elementary, you will notice the Simmons touch and flair everywhere. Several years ago, she went to Ms. Jackson with an idea for recognizing students in a special way. She explained that while assisting in a classroom, helping students with special needs, she discovered a way to display the students' work outside in the hallway in such a unique way to highlight their hard work, efforts, good deeds, and achievements. This is how the Student Recognition Wall came to life at Belmont Elementary School. The Student Recognition Wall, also known as Belmont Star Citizens, came to life, and students are recognized several categories four times per year. Mrs. Simmons was a gift to the students, faculty, and staff, and she will be fondly missed. We wish her her best in the next chapter of our life and well in retirement. Congratulations. Our next retirement is Karen Manzio. Congratulations, Karen. Since 1994, Karen has been the ever-present cheerleader and CEO of the Music, Art, and Theater Department for North Babylon Schools. She's also the graphic designer for our programs and flyers. Karen has been a chaperone, an instrument engraver, and a press agent. Nobody will ever know how hard her job has been because her skillful hands, quick wit, and expert skills make the job look easy, but it sure is not. Over the last six years, Karen's support has expanded to other departments. She has been a key player within the Science Department, as someone the teachers know they can always rely on. This year, she has also taken on the Social Studies Department. It is important to note that Karen has been a guide for all departments and is always willing to help when needed. She knows where to find every form, she knows everyone's name, and understands all the different procedures within the district. She has been an invaluable member of the director's team. Karen always greets everyone with a smile and her infectious laughter. She is not only a team player, but a wonderful friend to all she works with. We wish her relaxing and happy retirement. Congratulations. Is Patricia Daeris here? Patricia, come on down, please. Thank you. Patricia is a part-time, or was a part-time, or will be a was part-time, right, part-time bus driver in our Transportation Department. Patty came to North Babylon in June of 2007. She exhibits an intense sense of duty to her students in the North Babylon School District. Patty ends her career driving bus number 126 to Marion G. Vedder, Robert Moses, and the high school. During her years of service to the North Babylon School District, she has developed a great relationship with her students. She is respected by her colleagues and a true team player. Patty comes to work every day willing and able to do her job safely and with a smile on her face. She can always be counted on when needed and is a pleasure to have as a part of our staff. We will truly miss her and wish her all the best in her retirement. Congratulations. Come on over here. Patty, we have a nice talk for you. Okay, come on over here. Let's take a picture. Is Robert Hand here? Excellent. Was that Ms. Jackson I heard out there with the little call on that one? All right. So Mr. Hand has been a part of the Belmont family for over 16 years. He has always been a hard worker and dedicated to ensuring Belmont Elementary looks and feels clean. He's extremely flexible and goes well above and beyond on a daily basis. His attention to detail ensures a safe environment for our students and staff. Bob played a large role and was very helpful in assisting with the seamless transition of our new head custodian, Chris. It is an honor to have a dedicated staff member as a part of the Belmont family. Bob is someone who always shows up and guarantees to get the job done. He has always gone above and beyond for the students and staff, and he will be greatly missed. Bob, we wish you all the best in the next stage of your life. Congratulations on your retirement. Okay, so we're going to move on to our tenures now. The first person for tenure I have is Colleen Cafizo. Is Colleen here? No, so Colleen was unable to make it tonight, but I'm going to read the words that I have for Colleen and congratulate her on her tenure. Mrs. Cafizo is a talented member of our high school World Language Department. She has taught Spanish III, Spanish III for native speakers, Everyday Spanish, and Spanish I. She creates a student-friendly classroom environment, which is inviting, kind, and makes her students feel at home. Her knowledge of the Spanish language and culture was instrumental in the creation of a New World Language Course called Hispanic History and Culture Through the Arts, where she wrote the curriculum filled with literature, film, art, dance, and music. Thank you for sharing your talent with our students. Mrs. Cafizo's students respond enthusiastically while immersing themselves in cultural studies utilizing the latest technological tools. She consistently fundraises for scholarships which benefit Central American students, secondary education programs, human rights issues, environmental projects, and youth shelters. Social-emotional learning is a large part of Mrs. Cafizo's daily routine. She incorporates mindfulness activities to begin her class each day and does regular check-ins to offer support to her students. She is an active member of the high school faculty, often attending student events, chaperoning athletic and academic events, as well as becoming the advisor of our new chess club. Mrs. Cafizo regularly participates in equity training and culturally responsive training workshops. It is my honor to congratulate Mrs. Cafizo on her tenure. Mr. Foster. Come on down. Mr. Foster is a valued member of our middle school teaching staff, where he serves as a technology teacher. The amazing part about Mr. Foster is that he's actually retired and came out of retirement to come back here to work with us in the North Babylon School District. He works primarily with our 7th and 8th grade students. His knowledge of our students' technological needs is amazing. He incorporates a variety of projects that students enjoy creating while learning skills to enhance their abilities utilizing today's technology. Students can be found engaging in projects such as creating board games, constructing both CO2 and solar cars, they've worked on drafting projects and made working gumball machines. Mr. Foster is a team player and can always be counted on when needed. He always has the students' best interests at heart. I am pleased to recommend and congratulate Mr. Foster for tenure again. Congratulations. I have a certificate for you for tenure, and I'd like you to come on over for a picture. Yeah, that'd be good. Ms. Lambert. There she is. Come on down. Ms. Lambert is a very talented member of our Art Department. She has taught Studio Art, Creative Crafts, Portfolio Development, Painting and Drawing I and II, as well as AP Art and Design. Her classroom is an engaging, student-friendly learning environment where her extensive knowledge of the fine arts is evident. A fun fact about Mrs. Lambert is that you could probably see some of her own artwork throughout galleries here on Long Island. As many of you can recall, Ms. Lambert was not here too long ago to recognize a student under her leadership who scored a perfect score of a five on his AP exam. Ms. Lambert is the advisor of the National Art Honor Society, where students can be found sending holiday cards to our local nursing homes, creating tie-dye masks for a fundraiser, leading the Painted Pumpkin Virtual Auction fundraiser for the Babylon Breast Cancer Coalition, as well as painting murals at Cedar Beach. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Lambert coaches girls cross-country, as well as winter and spring track, where her athletes excel and will also recognize for their accomplishments here at one of our board meetings. And congratulations on this spring and the amazing accomplishments of your team. Ms. Lambert continues to make the North Babylon High School Art Department a step above the rest, and it is my honor to congratulate you on your tenure. Congratulations. Visually, a certificate. Come on over, take a picture. Is Ms. Lena Lennis here? Come on down. I feel like Price is Right. Come on down. You are the next contestant on North Babylon Price is Right. Congratulations. Ms. Lenis is a talented 5th grade dual-language teacher. She's a master at being able to offer instruction to her students in both English and Spanish. She regularly participates in professional development, where she incorporates strategies learned into her daily lessons. Ms. Lenis has built a strong rapport with her students and their parents. Ms. Lenis is always looking for ways to improve and enhance her relationships with her students and parents. To that end, she regularly utilizes technology to communicate by the way of seesaw and class dojo. This allows her to share student work and keep parents informed of classroom ongoings. Ms. Lenis has created her own YouTube channel, which is utilized to assist parents in accessing digital platforms and resources. Ms. Lenis also regularly integrates social-emotional learning into her classroom. She has aligned her classroom practices with the district's Ruler Initiative and regularly incorporates a variety of strategies and techniques to support her students' academic and social-emotional growth. Ms. Lenis has students working through project-based learning and offers additional support using Kahoot, Extra Math, and Envisions. Ms. Lenis can be found outside the classroom decorating the building with student work or supporting an event. She provides after-school AIS and has volunteered to serve as a mentor. She has presented at E&amp;L and Dual Language Family Nights and has facilitated PSI Love You Day activities, attended PTA events, and Family Steam Night. It is my pleasure to recommend and congratulate you on your tenure. Congratulations. Our next contestant is Ms. Eileen McTae. Congratulations. Ms. McTae is a beloved member of our world language department at the middle school and has developed a positive relationship with her students and colleagues. Ms. McTae came to us when the district launched our exploratory lot program at Robert Moses Middle School. She has taught exploratory lot, as well as Italian VII and Italian VIII. Ms. McTae is involved in many committees such as the Report Card Committee, Assessment Committee, District Cultural Proficiency Task Force, and the Ruler Team at Robert Moses, just to name a few. She is known to be a team player who works collaboratively with all staff. Ms. McTae creates a positive environment for her students and is always willing to lend a hand whenever needed. I look forward to Ms. McTae's continued success here in North Babylon as she plays a key role in growing our world language department and sharing her love for the Italian language and culture. It is a great pleasure that I recommend and congratulate Ms. McTae for her tenure. Chandler Manning, can you please come down? Ms. Manning has done and continues to do an outstanding job with our middle school physical education program. She has an amazing rapport with students and is an integral part of our school's community. Ms. Manning's knowledge of athletics and coaching experience helps to enhance her relationships with her students. She creates an atmosphere that is enticing to our students, who look forward to her class each and every day. She has brought both structure and leadership to the physical education department while creating a positive learning atmosphere. Ms. Manning has a deep understanding of educational strategies, different learning styles, behavior plans, and IEP goals. These skills enable her to have a great success with her students. I would describe Ms. Manning's time here in North Babylon as being extremely productive. She utilizes technology in the development of her lesson plans, which is a very unique attribute for a physical education teacher. Ms. Manning can be found outside of the classroom coordinating and participating in students' first staff sports nights, chaperoning events, and assisting with the turkey trot and holiday run. In addition to her role as an exceptional teacher, she also coaches our middle school girls soccer team, high school girls varsity bowling, and is the head coach of our JV girls lacrosse team. Ms. Manning has also taken on the task of certifying our coaches district-wide in first aid and CPR. It is without reservation that I recommend and congratulate Ms. Manning for her tenure. Congratulations. Come on over here. Could I please now have Fallon Piore, please, come on down? Congratulations, Fallon. Ms. Piore is a valued member of our world language department. She teaches Spanish to our 7th and 8th grade students. She creates an inviting environment in her classroom for all students. Ms. Piore has become an important part of enhancing our curriculum for the World Languages Department. She has written a new curriculum for 7th grade Spanish, which helped bridge the gap between the new 7th and 8th grade courses. Ms. Piore has had great success with her students and their preparation for their high school courses is outstanding. Ms. Piore takes on active roles within and outside of the classroom. She is a member of our cultural proficiency team and has taken on the role of yearbook club advisor. She had the challenging task of creating, selling, and distributing the yearbook during the shut time that was caused due to the pandemic. It did not hinder her ability to develop a plan, which allowed parents to purchase yearbooks online and have it shipped directly to their home. Ms. Piore is a team player and works collaboratively with all staff. She attends sporting events, concerts, and participates in Spirit Week. She's electrifying. She is the co-chair for the 8th grade committee and has assisted in the intricate details of planning 8th grade events such as the end-of-year barbecue, moving up ceremony, and lawn sign distribution, just to name a few. She is an asset to the district who will benefit our students for years to come. It is my pleasure to recommend and congratulate Ms. Piore for earning tenure tonight. Congratulations. Is Carolyn Rosinski here? Here she is. Great. Congratulations. Come on down. So they put your last name in my speech a lot, Ms. Rosinski. I mean, I have to try to get this right. So Ms. Rosinski is a talented member of our music department. She has worked diligently for the past few years to improve our program at the middle school level. Carolyn has taught 6th, 7th, and 8th grade orchestra, 6th and 7th grade general music, as well as the Chamber Orchestra. She formed the Chamber Orchestra as a club to offer advanced technique and repertoire to our 7th and 8th grade orchestra students. Carolyn goes above and beyond for our students. She continues to make our esteemed music program enticing by creating small groups for performances and chamber ensembles. Students also have the opportunity to perform at our moving up ceremonies and several other community events. During the pandemic, when students were not able to gather, Ms. Rosinski went above and beyond by volunteering for curbside pickup and instrument delivery so her students could practice at home. She made sure they had all of the materials they needed to continue playing. Carolyn also volunteers to judge for SCMEA and NISFA auditions. In addition, she has had numerous students participate in these events. Each year, she supports over 30 students in their preparation for the NISMAs solar festivals. Since Carolyn began her career in North Babylon, 20 middle school students have been selected for the All County Orchestra in grades 7 and 8 due to her preparation and devotion to the students in our music program. Outside the classroom, Carolyn was the co-advisor for the 8th grade class, where she planned events and assisted with moving up ceremonies. She is currently the 7th grade advisor, where she plans student activities and community involvement. She participated in the Halloween Bingo, cultural Thanksgiving recipe writing, holiday movie events, and assisted with the holiday food drive. Ms. Rosinski is a valued member of our faculty, and it is with great pleasure that I recommend and congratulate you on your tenure. Congratulations. So we have a couple of administrators also earning tenure tonight. I would first like to invite down Mr. Jason Friesen. So Mr. Friesen is a valued administrator in the North Babylon School District. His past four years as the Director of Physical Education, Health, Athletics, and Recreation has been filled with enhanced experiences for our students. Jason's quality of work and dedication is undeniably motivated by his love for educating students and creating a health-safe environment for all. He is a hard-working professional who takes pride in his work by highlighting student accomplishments in the classroom and on the athletic field. Managing athletic teams is no easy task. However, Jason always handles every challenge with patience, kindness, and utilizing best practices. He is visible and accessible to all stakeholders and can be counted on to support district and community initiatives. He continues to look for ways to support the growth of our student athletes and celebrate their accomplishments. He regularly utilizes social media and public relations representatives to promote and support our student athletes. North Babylon was recognized by NISFA as a Scholar-Athlete Team School of Excellence for the third straight year in a row. Congratulations. Jason has worked with our middle school administration to create a 6th grade intermural program, as well as adding several additional teams at the middle school level. When the girls' flag football team came to Long Island this year, Mr. Friesen immediately jumped into action and secured a spot for North Babylon to be a part of this history-making statewide program for high school students. Jason has also been an integral part of our bond work, which has enhanced our athletic facilities, as well as paying close attention to details to the redesign of our high school locker rooms. Upon completion of these state-of-the-art upgrades, Mr. Friesen organized a ribbon-cutting ceremony for each new completed project and reopening of the fields. Mr. Friesen exuded patience, flexibility, and understanding when developing modified lesson plans during the pandemic. He also worked closely with our nursing staff to implement COVID-19 safety protocols on a day-to-day basis. He worked collaboratively with central office administration, building administrators, coaches, and student athletes to field teams following COVID-19 protocols, which required careful planning. Jason is a respected member of our administrative staff. His cooperation and understanding of the values of the North Babylon community has made him an invaluable colleague to work with. It is with great pleasure that I recommend and congratulate Mr. Friesen for tenure. I would like to now invite up Mr. Regaro, our middle school principal. Got him in a suit and everything today. Mr. Regaro is a positive member of our administrative team. He is truly dedicated to the success of our students, faculty, and staff. Mr. Regaro is a prominent presence in the middle school building. He works collaboratively with his team and consistently creates a positive atmosphere for students and staff alike. What is most recognizable about Mr. Regaro's leadership is how he interacts with the student body. He knows most students by name, always has a smile on his face when interacting with them, and truly shows that he loves what he does. Mr. Regaro truly understands the ideology that leadership is about relationships. He has developed excellent relationships with students, staff, and the community at large. He has significantly impacted the culture of the middle school in a positive way, works collaboratively with stakeholders, and is always looking for ways to improve and enhance the school. Mr. Regaro has added so much to the middle school. He has worked collaboratively with his team to develop a PBIS system, improved and enhanced 8th grade moving up activities, incorporated a PSI Love You Day assembly program, and supported 8th grade Career Day. He also has strived to increase student engagement in the school through implementing a turkey trot, Halloween celebrations, spirit days, lunch run club, intermurals, and a new entrant welcome breakfast. During the pandemic, Mr. Regaro showed tremendous flexibility, adaptability, and leadership. He supported at-risk students, created virtual ceremonies to celebrate student successes and achievements, distributed lawn signs to 8th grade students, helped with distributing Chromebooks, supported families with food insecurity, and supported modifying grading and report card policies. Mr. Regaro has also spent a significant amount of time improving and enhancing the academic programs of the middle school. He's created an RTI data team, is implementing Yale University's Ruler approach, incorporated teaming within grade levels, revamped the master schedule, incorporated STARZ Enterprise Assessments, and has created new innovative courses for students. Mr. Regaro has become a valued member of our educational community and is with great pride and pleasure that I recommend and congratulate him on his tenure. I just do want to mention, since they're here tonight, I want to thank the hard work of Nicole Manzella and Kim Reynolds as the leaders of our mentor program. They work with our non-tenured staff throughout the school year, and your support is tremendous in getting to the point here where these fine candidates have earned tenure here tonight. And I want to thank you personally for all your hard work. Thank you. So at this time, if everyone who got an award or tenure wants to sneak out at this point, now is the time to do it, and we won't look. Thank you all again on behalf of the Board of Education and the North Babylon School District. Congratulations.
And I'm like, okay, great.
Okay, so I'll just say J.
So A through J.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
Do I have the right one?
Um, G, T?
H, I, J. Yeah, so A through J.
Okay, so moving on. Omnibus motion items, letters A through J. I need a motion. Motion Bob, second. Second Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Tax anticipation, this is going to be a roll call vote, guys. Tax anticipation note, resolution of North Babylon Union Free School District, adopt June 16, 2022, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $20 million tax anticipation notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes levied or to be levied for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, resolved by the Board of Education of North Babylon Union Schools District. So I need a motion first. Motion Bob Scheid, second. Second Mr. Caraleo, all in favor, we need a roll call. So Veronica?
Mr. Scheid?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mr. Caraleo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivers?
She had to step out.
Mrs. Skalov and Caraleo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rowland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Transfer of funds for the 2223 school year. Do I have to read all these, Doug?
No, you can do it.
No, right? Just titles? Okay, so transfer of funds for the 20222223 school year, I'm sorry. Motion? Motion Mr. Calario, second. Second Mr. Scheid, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Transfer of funds for 2022 for TRS, motion. Motion Mr. Caraleo, second. Second Ms. Rowland, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. And then 202223, transfer of funds for the EBLAR fund. Motion? Motion Mr. Caraleo, second. Second Mr. Scheid, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Transfer of funds to Workers' Compensation Fund, need a motion. Motion Ms. Rowland, second. Second Mr. Caraleo, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Memorandum of Agreement for the IBT Local 237, I need a motion. Motion Ms. Rowland, second. Second Mr. Scheid, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Memorandum of Agreement, Paraprofessionals Cafeteria Aid Chapter. Motion Mrs. Rowland, second. Second Mrs. Rivers, all in favor? Aye, aye, motion carries. We got some reports from subcommittees, so audit committee met on 24th. Someone want to give us a little update, or we good? Okay. Building Inspection Committee, any updates?
So I'm going to not use a microphone. Can I borrow yours so that I can just stream in? So we had a meeting last week. We spoke about floor and computer art rooms, and we're picking out furniture with a background. Thank you. So we did that last week, with decisions were made regarding design, and those designs will then be shared with the Board of Education in their totality. These are for projects that are going to be completed this coming summer. Yep. So we have another meeting coming up regarding design of next year's projects, which are our cafeterias and libraries and middle school auditorium are the main projects in there, and that'll be upcoming as well over the summer. Okay, so Policy Committee? Anything on that, scheduled meeting coming?
Well, we definitely will move forward for July. There are certain topics and subjects that we've been discussing, and just more recently on that, 3172, the release of the statement, and media relations has been easily included on site as well, anyone who wants to charge to get involved in how we are going to, like, order a manager file and designate a spokesperson or people when it comes to certain situations of large magnitude.
Great, thank you. How about Communication Committee? I don't think there's been a meeting since the last. Okay. So again, just during this, we will have a reorg meeting in July, so we'll have some new committees formed, and we'll move forward for the next school year. Now, part of our discussion. Yes, so this was something that we discussed at our last meeting, and we had option one and option two. We had a conversation that we were leaning towards option two, which was Parliament Place and William E. DeLuca being the early school with a student time of 8:45 to 3:05, and a teacher time 8:30 to 3:20. And then Marion, G. Vedder, Woods, and Belmont having a student day of 9:15 to 3:35, and a teacher day of 9 to 3:50. In that circumstance, in speaking with the principals and them speaking with the teachers, they would like to run clubs in the morning for those late schools so that it doesn't get too late in the evening, and clubs would be from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., as well as the AIS Academy. We are able to run busing in the morning to get students there for clubs and those activities at those three schools. We also are recommending UPK be from 9 to 2:30 with a teacher day of 8:45 to 3:35. Any questions? Yes, the times for each of them. So Parliament and DeLuca Student Day, 8:45 to 3:05. Vedder, Woods, and Belmont, 9:15 to 3:35. And then UPK, 9 to 2:30.
And then would be UPK start time and end time for the teachers that all consent to be contrasted time?
Yep, 8:45 to 3:35 would be the teacher day.
Okay, great. I think that there should be some, if you can't start at the same time because of the cost of the busing, then I think that, well, we have, that is the late start that during closing, I'm in favor of your recommendation.
Any other board members have any? So, so we got to have a consensus that those are the times, right? So I will get those out tomorrow immediately to the community, to all the principals, so that we get information out quickly. I will say I think it would be important for us during the summer to have a conversation about what future years look like in case we end up needing this split. I think I shared before, for example, Smithtown, they have late and early schools, and they're on a two-year cycle, so you have to look at that. So if we plan on having to utilize a split schedule, my, people can plan. If we're able to figure out this thing, then of course we could go take, oh, and I'm in agreement, the start of the school day at the same time would be optimal. All right, but if those conversations are, we can plan. You know, as the new. The next statement, next topic is SEL Parents Workshops. I think that question came from Ms. River.
One more?
Yeah. I just had a question. I know there were two workshops that were offered this month, so I just wanted, and you know, considering the need of our district just most recently, or every district overall, if we could just get an update on how the workshops were.
Fortunately, not very well attended. So the first workshop, only one parent attended, and four attended the second. So Ms. Gillan, Ms. Finnick, and I are actually working on a plan for next year where we are going to attach those workshops that into currently existing meetings. For example, presentations at all PTAs, so one month at each PTA, attaching to SEPA, attaching to PASA. I'm going in. So looking at. So. So that we can enhance and improve our enrollment at those. Plan during the, Ms. Finnick has already started those workings with Ms. Gillan, and will continue that work through the summer and come up with a plan for next school year.
And would that be offered as well for staff as well?
Yeah, so the question was, would that be also offered for staff? And the answer is yes. So Ms. Finnick has done a lot of work with staff throughout the school year, and will continue to do that. So we'll come up with a more formalized plan regarding staff workshops and enrollment in workshops, and she absolutely already offers many after-school professional developments as a part of the five hours of PD, and we're doing several during the summer. That teachers can take that PD in the summer to count towards their five hours of professional development.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, over the summer and in the beginning, early stages of the school year.
Yep. Absolutely. And we will be fully implementing ruler starting the school year in every school, every classroom.
Glenn, will we be able to get a presentation of how the ruler's going to be in all the classrooms and?
Yeah, we can look at a planning meeting in the summer and do some presentation then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm working, I'm good here, right? Yeah. So our next topic is the naming of our stadium.
Oh, so the Board of Education asked me to do some research as we received some correspondence about naming our football stadium, and there was conversations, I think Mr. Caraleo recalled it possibly already being named. In looking back at the records and speaking with our former athletic director, we were able to determine that the stadium has already been named in honor of Chuck Heiser or Charles Heiser. He was an athletic director here in the 60s and 70s, and that stadium has already been dedicated to him. We are going to check signage, see where the sign is, make sure it's appropriately displayed, and I can write back to the individual who reached out to us to let them know that that is already dedicated to another individual.
Perfect. Anyone have anything on that? Good? Yeah, perfect, thank you for that, Mr. Eschbach. The next topic is the UPK class.
Yeah, so I can start. So we had conversation at the last meeting, Ms. Gillan did a presentation about adding a seventh class, which would include 18 additional students having the opportunity to attend our UPK program next year. We discussed some of the cost savings that go along with that because of the idea of having access to more aid through our UPK foundational aid. So at this point, in order to get up and running, and parents have been calling, I wanted to see if there was consensus from the board to run that seventh class for next year.
Is there any questions about that program from any board members?
I have a question. Do we use a seventh class this year that would be made to seven classes every year going forward that we have a new program?
So when we, when we go to faculty, staffing, and budget presentations, each year we'll present to you our recommendation, and it would also be dependent upon the aid that we receive each year. That's an annual aid amount, so we could get more. They promised us that they wouldn't reduce it, but you, you don't know that they won't if there's a fiscal crisis. So really, our current programming of seven classes utilizes almost all of our aid that we have been allocated. So if we maintain that level, we can maintain seven classes effectively and financially responsibly. What the previous recommendation was when we had the sixth class, we were paying for that totally out of our budget, which was about $180,000. At this point, we're utilizing the additional aid, which keeps our class about $18,000 out of our general fund. So if anything changes with the grant aid, we would let you know and present it during the year. You're welcome.
So what happens with that $180,000 that we budgeted for?
So it's currently in our budget that was approved by the community, and it is available for us to utilize and probably really safeguard considering inflation and looking at, did we budget and plan for, remember, we planned at a 7.9% inflation rate, and now it's at 8.6 and 8.8 and rising, and starting July 1, we're in the new fiscal budget, so it could be a very expensive summer and fall with utilities. So we have that money, we know that it's there, and we will responsibly monitor that. And then if it's left over at the end of the year, similar to what you just did tonight in improving those transfer of funds, we could look at putting that back into reserves or utilizing less reserves next year if need be.
Perfect. Anyone, any questions? So I just need a board consensus on this, that we have, you know, four or more board members to agree with adding the seventh class, correct?
Yep.
So one, two, three, four, we have a consensus.
Great, so we'll be adding that class, and Ms. Gillan, then you can work with Ms. Lark, and we can start notifying the next group of kids. Excellent.
And the last topic was, again, a little bit of an update, I believe, on the sensory room. I believe that was also from Mrs. Rivers?
It was from Teresa, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Calaleo.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, we can schedule that. Also, so it's, it's fully completed. There's one sensor room at DeLuca, it's completed. We actually, if you remember, we did a video on the cosmetology studio. We have a video for the sensory room in the special ed programs at DeLuca. We're in the final stages of editing that, so I'll have that for the board and the community. But absolutely, we could schedule a walkthrough. The room is fully up and functioning. We are towards the end of the agreement of having an MOA for an occupational therapist to be a part of our teaching unit that would be staffed in that room. Right now, we're utilizing occupational therapists from outside agencies to work with our students in that space with the goal of next year having somebody on our staff, but we could absolutely schedule a visit. You can work through the district clerk at a time that works for you, and you guys could do it as a group or individually, and then the clerk would set the appointment up with me and the building principal, and you guys could visit that room at any time.
Is there anybody else who wants to?
Yeah, I'm interested.
Yeah, so if you want to go outside of work time, too, we absolutely can schedule something like before a meeting, and all meet there, go through there, and then go to our meeting if you would like to do that as well. So you can work with the clerk on a date and time that works for you guys, and we'll make it available.
Perfect, that sounds awesome.
All right.
Any other questions on that, guys? Good, moving on. Anything you want to add? Okay, perfect. This is the part where public participation, this section of the agenda, gives the Board of Education opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. The time available will be limited to five minutes. We have to come up to the mic, we'll supr, it's not working, do we have one that works? Awesome. And just state where you, your name and, you know, address or location close by, and be the first. Anyone?
Hi, well, I guess we see that. I'm sure they're just as excited as I am. Hi. Hi, Evelyn Handel, 7 Hinton Avenue. All right, tonight was great. I'm sure you're aware we are on Channel 7 news tonight, and it makes me sad that there's so much good stuff here, and it's never good when it's not.
We're not aware, I'm not aware.
Well, I just, I wish they had something good here. I'm happy that you did the UPK, I'm happy, the elementary settle, people wanted to know class size, that was still on your table. You were going to discuss elementary class size, it was a big topic at the last meeting. Hello? 26?
Yeah.
No, like, oh, I'm sorry.
Was there?
It was, it was a very big topic at the last meeting, and you were going to discuss it. Oh, well, you were going to discuss it, so it's staying how it is, it's a 27.
As of right now, it's staying as it is, as of right now.
Okay. Oh, you're going to really love me. All right, let's talk about rumors. There's so many rumors in this district. I don't deal in rumors, I come right out and ask. I've gotten one settled tonight. I'd like to know if there's going to be any changes in administration next year.
It's a personnel topic, and we're currently in talks about certain situations, so we can't really talk about that here.
Well, well, I'm going to just tell you, I've done a little reading in the last few days. If a superintendent, if this superintendent were to leave, I believe in the contract it says one year, either he has to give notice or you have to give notice. I believe that was, what was stated in the contract, so.
I'm going to defer to counsel.
Go ahead.
Do you want to give Doug a microphone?
Thank you, I'll, I'll keep this short and sweet, um, as I typically do. I was being charged to you. So there are certain provisions in the superintendent's contract with the district that contain notice provisions regarding when, as, as you correctly state, uh, as to when the superintendent would need, need to give notice, um, before he leaves. Those provisions are very specific. The contract obviously is available per sort of foil, which you know. But it, there are exceptions to those requirements, right? So that's just to answer your question. I'm not going to address the rumors that you, that Mr. Lucetti has already addressed.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just state what I have to state then. Um, there's a lot of rumors. Glenn, you've been here for seven years, there has been a lot of good here in those seven years. I'm going to speak for what I have heard from a lot of people. They don't want to pay two salaries for one job next year. I think the community is so done with that, so I hope you are here next year. I want to say to Danny. Danny, you've been around a very long time. You did this a million years ago, and you came back and did it again. And I thank you because I would not want to sit up there. Take the bow, go ahead. Um, the anticipated tax note for twenty million dollars, what was that for?
So each year, we have to, um, plan for the borrowing of money to ensure that we are cash solvent so that we can make our payrolls and expenditures until we collect our taxes.
Okay. I see, I think that might have been painless, 'cause that wasn't as horrible as I thought. All right, thanks. Well, was it for you? You know, you know what? I, I'm gonna be honest, though, it's really hard when you hear rumors. And you know I work here, I don't hear rumors at work. People call me and tell me, "Oh, my God, did you hear this?" I don't do, um, Facebook, and apparently there's a lot of stuff on there. I don't like to deal in rumors, I would rather just come right out and ask, and I think you know I emailed you, I, I'd rather just ask.
Oh, you emailed me?
No, 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 well, yeah, I did. Next time I'll do it to the board, so you have to respond. No, it's okay, it's just I don't like to deal in rumor. And I haven't always agreed with you, and I know you haven't always agreed with me. But in the seven years you've been here, you've made a difference. And, and I recognize that as much as everybody else should. So I, I do hope you're here next year because the last two years in particular have been a nightmare. Um, and we've all gotten through it because we've gotten through it together.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Gardner, and I live at five seven O Beach Street. And I actually want to discuss class sizes. I, I discussed it earlier in the year with the principal of the school that I am now presently helping out as, as a PTA member. I do not understand why, at our primary levels, there are twenty-seven children in those classes. If New York City schools can have their primary classes capped at twenty-two, I don't understand why we cannot. I do understand that things are always based around money. It's also always based around space and how much space we have in each of our schools. But having twenty-seven children in these classes makes it extremely difficult for their teachers, for their parents, and for every other staff member that needs to be with these children on a regular basis. And it is extremely unfair to our children at that young age to not receive what they should. And I cannot, for the life of me, understand why we, as the responsible adults in their life, do not do better for them. And I'm asking you to reconsider next year's class sizes of twenty-seven, and do it now over the summer because once those children are in those classes, it is very hard to move them all around. That is my statement, and I truly hope that you take it to heart for the better of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hello, Jennifer Dina Tally Mitchell, Alfred Street. First, I want to thank you, uh, Ms. Veronica, I don't know how to say your last name for your very, um, for your emails back and forth, and I appreciate the emails that you sent me. Dan, I do want to thank you. I'm, it's a, it's a, um, as a volunteer, as all of you are volunteers doing this job, it is not something that I personally ran for, 'cause it's not something that I think I can commit my time, patience, and energy to. And so I appreciate everyone that is sitting up there and doing this because you get a lot of feedback and you tend to get all of my anger and everyone else's anger. And I do apologize if I've ever come off as angry or anything. But, um, I appreciate you all for taking the time to do this because it is volunteer, and you do put a lot of time and effort into making our community better. And so, thank you. Thank you for addressing the, uh, sensory room. And again, thank you for also having the, um, for getting the OT moving with that. I appreciate, I've heard great things about the new social worker that we got on staff. Um, I don't know if that was discussed, we do have one on staff, and I know we're still gonna be hiring the second one for next year. I think that we're moving forward. I would like to ask, when you do make the PTA calendars, because I've heard a lot of feedback from, and it's a handful of parents, I know it's only a handful of parents. But when you have all the PTA meetings on the same night, it's hard if you have a child in DeLuca and a child at Belmont to try to get to both, you can't do both PTA meetings when they're on the same night. And I know, you know, we have, DeLuca has our special needs classes, so does Belmont, so does Woods Road. And I know it's hard, and I know there's only so many days in the month, but I would appreciate if you took that into account because we do have some parents that bounce back and forth from DeLuca to Belmont. Because, you know, if you have a child in a special class, you still wanna know what's going on there, you still wanna participate, you still wanna be able to, you know, be part of the, the, like, today we did the dad's fair, you know? But if you weren't at the meeting, did you know that you had to volunteer for it? And that's just something, something small that I would ask that you would look into. Same thing with Field Day. Belmont and DeLuca had Field Day at the same time, and I know there were parents running back and forth. And I mean, I'm, my son's in Belmont, which is why I hear a lot of the Belmont-DeLuca issues. Nothing big, but, um, I would appreciate if you would just keep that into consideration when you do make the calendars for the PTA for next year.
Yeah. So, so thank you for that, we appreciate all, and we, we do agree with you. As I was just conferring with, um, Glenn, when I was on the PTA council, we, we did, you know, collaborate with administration. PTA all got together and had a conversation about calendar requests, and it goes on to administration, is actually a meeting and back and forth. And I think we always had a concern about that, but again, with the limited amount of evenings, um, you know, I thought we, we, back then, I'm just gonna speak for back then, 'cause I don't know what's happening actually right now, but we tried to keep, you know, the elementary schools on one night, and middle school on another night, and the high school on a, you know, different night. So parents who may have had a student in elementary as well as middle school and high school could attend all three meetings. So there are some anomalies with the situations that we do have, and I think that Glenn could maybe take that into consideration at the upcoming meetings to talk about that.
Yeah, and I mean, maybe it's not every, maybe just like every other month have it spread out of a day or two here. 'Cause, I mean, I know, if you do have, I, I think it's mostly DeLuca parents that are having the issue because if, but I, I could be completely wrong.
Something with times as well?
Yeah.
Like a scaffold time where maybe they're, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes different in time, where six and seven fifteen or something like that?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at that again, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Okay. And then, um, I'm gonna put my special needs focus group co-chair hat on for a second. We did, um, Ms. Mandy, I know I saw there you are, um, and Kat Tedesco is also our other co-chair. We did, uh, put up on the North Babylon website underneath both the special education and the SEPTA page, the booklet that we have been working really, really hard for, uh, to get up there. And, um, I believe, hopefully, we'll be able to do a presentation for you next year or within the next couple of months on it. It's really great information. Um, we have a lot of stuff that we're planning on working on for next year, too. Um, we're gonna try and get a CSE booklet up there as well, what to expect in a CSE for, uh, parents that do have children with special needs that don't quite know how to do it. So, um, I would just like everybody that helped out in the community, staff, board members, there was a lot of collaboration, and I just want to acknowledge it, and, um, it's really good. If you haven't looked at it, check it out. And Ms. Brittany, I don't know how to say her last name. Oh, my God, she needs a raise. That woman needs a raise. So thank you.
Thank you.
So overflow would be determined when we make a finalization on class size? We're still in discussion. So last year, we determined class size, um, by August first. So that was the time when we made the final decision regarding class placement, enrollments, and if rollovers would happen. So it's my expectation sometime before then we'll have another discussion. Yeah, so it, it has been the last day of school for grades one through five, but since the pandemic hit, we have extended that timeline. That is a timeline that is not in policy, just something that the board and myself had discussed previously so that teachers would leave having an assignment, which they already do, so they have a tentative assignment for next year. And sectioning is determined based on the current class size enrollments. The one thing I do want to address is that if we drop from twenty-seven to twenty-six, um, we still have some sections that would be twenty-six and twenty-six at particular buildings, where some that are at twenty-seven then break down to eighteen's and nineteen's. So when we have a conversation about class size, sometimes we speak about equity as well, right? And there's still a big disparagement between twenty-six and eighteen and nineteen. So we need to really have a good conversation of what is the number? In the, there's a number in policy, and then a number that the board would recommend for me to follow, um, regarding class size. 'Cause if we go to twenty-six, that, um, will alleviate the five sections. There are five sections in the district, there are seventy-three total sections in the district. There are five of those that are at twenty-seven. If we move the number to twenty-six, those twenty-sevens go away, but there ends up being five sections at twenty-six. And some of those other sections that you would compare to are now eighteen, nineteen, so two sections of twenty-seven becomes eighteen's and nineteen's. But then you would have a, another grade in the same building at twenty-six and twenty-six. So it's a conversation we need to have in detail so that we can come to the number that's appropriate. So, believe it or not, most of those kids happen to be Parliament students when we look at the enrollment. But there's, um, there's nineteen in that class, and I don't know the number off of my, the top of my head, but I have done a chart. Ms. Butler and I look at rollovers, and we look at where they can go back to first grade. We have to look at which sections are maxed, where those students are, and we notify everyone in July, all rollovers. That's what they're told when they are rolled over in the first place.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all for, um, I just want to take two seconds, too, as this, um, is, you know, one of our final meetings of the year. Um, some people have already expressed it, but as the Board President, I wanted to, again, stand here before you and thank Mr. Caraleo for his service. Uh, we all know he's been a community member, a board member, a board president, uh, you know, continued service at the fire department for many, many, many years. Uh, he's a valued community member and will continue to be that. Um, and I just want to say thank you, Dan, uh, for all your service here, and, you know, there's still an audience out there we can use you in when, uh, time comes. So if you're missing some meetings, please join us regularly. And, uh, again, from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service. Uh, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Motion, Ms. Rowland. Second, Mr. Shide. All in favor?